Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for August 29th, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is...
This is Brian Derain.
You want to meet Brian? Thank you. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Spell up yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, ma'am chair.
Good morning. Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Ms. Olivier. Did we say she was here, Javier, or no?
I don't see her yet, so I'll just go forward just to make that standard.
Yep, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, we'll go through the extension schedule for 9:30. At this point, I'll say that we... The first four requests on the list have all expired, all expired relief, and our first time request for one-year extension. The board typically does not approve extensions if the applicant has not submitted their request prior to the expiration date of their zoning relief, but has regularly approved the first time request for extension. That... All that to say, to save time, I'll read these, and I'll read the first four into the record together, and they should... And we'll vote on those in one motion, and we'll move on from there, unless people have questions on this. So, the first we... First one we have is case BOA 1051313, with the address of 14 Mean Street. Next, we have case BOA 108525, with the address of 3 Westwood Street. After that, we have case BOA 835... 835348, the address of 883 Hyde Park Avenue. And finally, we have case BOA 1163709, with the address of 60 to 84 St. Paltall Street.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion?
Chair, a motion to approve extension until... Do we have a date?
Javier, are we doing one day, one year from today, or?
Yeah, we could do one year, uh, one day, one year from today, I'm sorry.
Okay, so a motion to approve an extension until August 29, 2024?
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Next on the... Next two we will address individually, first being case BOA 667111, the address of 151 Liverpool's Liverpool Street. Is the applicant present to explain the reason for an extension?
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tony LaCasey. I'm an attorney with a law firm of Croquetis &amp; Bluestein, 600 Atlantic Avenue in Boston. I'm representing City Point Liverpool LLC in connection with the proposed residential development at 151 Liverpool Street in East Boston. We resolved the reason for our last extension, that we were here last year, and obtained the required state permit for the proposed vehicle elevator earlier this year. But then our proposed construction financing fell through, and rising construction costs and interest rates have complicated are getting replacement financing in place. We expect to be able to overcome those complications, but, you know, need some more time.
Okay. Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
How many extensions have we, have we offered here?
Uh, this would be our fifth extension.
A fifth extension? Wow.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, this has been one series or another of unexpected complications, and then, of course, we ran into the pandemic. But we have demolished the building that was there that in itself had some problems because there was utility lines that were connected to our building that with no reasonments, we had some disputes with neighbors about that. But we were finally able to demolish the existing building and then ran into some issues, as I said, with the proposed vehicle elevator that we... That's critical for our layout. And we ended up getting the permit. Usually, that was not required in order to get the building permit, but there was a change in the policy, so we had to get that earlier this year. So the building permit is now ready to issue, and when we get mobilized and get our construction financing, we'll pull that permit and get construction started. The developer is committed to the project. We've just... And I think we've demonstrated our perseverance by continuing to forge ahead, and we do need some, some more time.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
A motion to extend for me a year for now, Ed.
May I have a second?
Second.
Hey, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 836636, the address of 603 Dorchester Avenue. The board originally granted this relief on August 23rd, 2018. This is the applicant's third request for a one-year extension. If the applicant and/or their representative present, they can further explain.
Is Mr. Noto present? Is that Christopher Conley with this project? Jessica, or does anybody know who is on?
If you're on for this proposal, can you raise your hand? Oh, that's on... Okay, you can unmute yourself as a panelist, Chris. Are you here to speak on behalf of this project? Doesn't give me the option to unmute him. He might be having connectivity issues.
He looks like he unmuted himself, Mr. Conley. Are you with 603 Dorchester Ave? Okay, well, Javier, we can either come back, assuming that might be the person, or make a motion.
Um, Madam Chair, Javier had to step out. This is Sam.
Okay.
Um, we... That is entirely up to you.
This one needs to be addressed.
Oh, Mr. Conley, is that you?
Nope, that was Brian, who probably should be muted right now.
Um, so we can come back, Madam Chair, or you guys can make a motion. Entirely up to you, but as this is the end of the extension section, that is up to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, would someone like to make a motion? I need a motion to keep going forward.
I'll make the motion to grant the extension from one year from today.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Okay?
That...
So just before we proceed to the hearings, I just want to point out, at this time, it appears that we are a six-member board, and one of our members needs to depart by 1:00 PM, which would make us a five-member board at that time. So just want to make sure all our applicants are aware of that, and if we could do our best to keep moving forward, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes, Madam Chair. Next, we have three discussions scheduled for 9:30. We have case BOA 1462119, with the address of 1742 to 1748 Dorchester Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott, Corleone, Miller. Madam Chair, before I start, are we... Is Ms. Board Member Olivier expected today? Or she... Do I... I'm sure you don't know at this point.
That's, that's the appropriate response. I don't know at this time.
I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but understood. Is it possible, is it possible? I mean, we'd like to go forward with the seven-member board if possible today, but is it possible to ask for a second call at the end of the 9:30s? Or do I have to ask for a deferral from forward?
Um, I am fine with that, and, you know, hopefully Javier or someone can let us know if our seventh board member appears.
Yeah, this Javier. I'll let you know. We're trying to get in contact with them.
Okay.
If you... Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair, I'd love... I'd respectfully request a deferral to the end of the 9:30s. If, if Ms. Olivier, Board Member Olivier, is not on, then we would ask for a deferral to a future. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need... Javier, I'm guessing I don't need a motion for that, correct?
No, no, you don't.
Okay, so let's proceed.
Then we move on to the hearing scheduled for 9:30 AM. And at this point, I will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this, from this time period?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Francis Adams. I'm an attorney in South Boston, with the business address of 350 West Broadway, South Boston, Mass. I represent Mercedes Mulligan, 84 Marine Road, BOA 1405151. We are withdrawing the application.
Okay. Uh, any questions? Do I need a motion?
Motion to withdraw the application.
Actually, sorry, you need to... Sorry, I'm sorry. You didn't read into the record. My bad.
I... That... I...
BOA, sorry.
That would be for case BOA 1405151, with the address of 84 Marine Road.
Okay. Well, that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to withdraw.
Is it to approve the withdrawal, or is it to... Javier?
Yes, to approve the withdrawal.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this time period? There's no... 109 Rutherford.
Yeah, did... We received a note about 109 Rutherford. Is that still... Are they still seeking a deferral?
Talk of that. Here's the document.
There you are.
We, we can continue to... Five Grayfield, they may not be on right now. When we call it, no one's different. Yeah.
Okay.
So, next we have case BOA 1493596, with the address... Excuse me, with the address of 5 Grayfield Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Hi, I'm Alan Misslove. I'm the homeowner.
Can you proceed?
Sure. So thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Alan Misslove. I'm the homeowner at 5 Grayfield Avenue in West Roxbury, where I've lived for 12 years with my wife and two children. As our family has expanded, we found our house to be a bit small. Sharing a bathroom with our two children is getting a bit old. And so we're hoping to convert our walk-up attic into a master bedroom and bathroom. And so as you can see on the plans on page two of the documents, the only external change for the project would be the installation of a dormer on the rear side of our house. And then, as you can see on pages four and five of the plans, the existing walk-up attic will become a master bedroom and bathroom, and the existing stairs will be adjusted to fit with these plans. After applying for a permit for this work, we received a refusal for three violations. First was the year... Rear yard was insufficient. We currently have 33 feet. We need 40 to do a zoning, and this is a pre-existing violation that's not changing. Second, the building height was excessive. We're proposing to convert our attic into a third floor. The zoning allows two and a half floors. We are not proposing to change the overall height of our house. And then, third, the floor area ratio is excessive. Our zoning area requires a floor area ratio of .3. With this project, we're adding approximately 600 square feet of living space, and our floor area ratio would be approximately .32, so slightly over the limit. We held in a buttersbub meeting where there are no negative comments, and the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council voted unanimously to support the project. Thank you again for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has to defer to the judgment of this board, and we can concur that a butters meeting was held, but there was no negative feedback from neighbors, and that the applicant did go on to meet with the JPNC, which voted unanimously to support this proposal. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor-at-Large, Michael Flaherty. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council unanimously supported this project. And that being said, the council has to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, go ahead. I have no raised hands at the moment. All right, with that, may I have a motion?
A motion. I make a motion to approve this project.
Do you need BPDA? Does BPDA need design review?
Yes, we... Yes, I'm sorry.
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1439377, the address of 31 Rodman Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Riansey, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the actual owner, Brian Dougherty, as well as the architect, Tom Rivera. As it was just read into the record, this is a proposal to combine two lots and expand livable space of an existing two-family by way of a rear addition with ground-level garage parking for two vehicles. The two units will be converted to condos, which aligns with the city's goal of increasing homeownership. The proposed square foot lot size is approximately 3,749 square feet. It is located within a sub-district of a 1F 4,000. Because of this, we have a zoning violation for insufficient lot size, as we are slightly below the 4,000 square feet. Further, the existing two-family is a non-conforming use. We have a violation for an extension of that non-conforming use. The proposal's design is aligned with the foams in the height of the existing adjacent buildings. We also have violations for the following: floor area ratio. This proposal calls for a .83, what is only compliant is a .6. The existing structure is non-conforming at a .7. Height, we are compliant on feet, but we're seeking relief under stories at three stories, where two and a half stories is what is allowed by the zoning code. You will see from the drawings that the elevation substantially drops going from the front of the dwelling structure to the rear, and that's where we get the height violations. But again, the height will stay consistent with the existing structure at 34 feet. Front yard violation, it's pre-existing non-conforming at 9.6. What is compliant is 20 feet. Again, we are not altering that footprint of that front yard structure. Side yard violations, again, these are pre-existing non-conforming. The existing structure is five feet on one side, 2.6 feet on the other side. What is compliant is 10 feet. But you will see from the plans that we were actually providing more of a setback with the addition at 7.8 feet on one side and 8.8 feet on the other side. Last violation we do have is a rear yard extension. It's pre-existing non-conforming, as of right now with the current structure at five feet. What is compliant is 20. With the combining the two parcels, it will allow us to provide a setback of approximately 17 feet in the rear. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Just, I have a couple of questions. Can you comment on the parking and how you're accessing that? Is there a current curb cut? And then, there was some comment about a mature tree that might be taken down? If you could comment on both of those?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the parking, so as you can see here from the, the actual site plan that we have here. So these two lots that are going to be combined are going to flow through from Rodman Street to Eldridge Road. The curb cut will be a new curb cut to provide the parking for the two-car garage. There is a mature tree in the back of this property that will be removed in order to allow for this. And again, the proponent has committed to planting four new trees in the rear on the sides of these properties as well. I know there's not really a clearer image on how or what those trees will look at, but if you go scroll back to the very first cover page, that you will notice that... Yep, so there's a one... There's another picture right below this one. I know this, for some reason, it was inadvertently left off. We had a larger-sized picture of that backyard showing the actual plantings. But again, during the community process, that is one thing that the proponent has committed to do is replanting four trees of landscape and plant. I did read the BPDA's recommendation, and the proponent will continue to work together if approved during the design review process.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has to defer to the judgment of this board. My apologies, Madam Chair. Due to personnel changes, I don't have a lot of information on this particular case. Our office did host in a butters meeting, I believe, in May of 2023. And the applicant did go on to meet with the JPNC, which I understand voted to defer to the board. As I said, beyond that, we're unaware of any other comments or concerns that have been forwarded to myself and the list on left. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor-at-Large, Michael Flaherty, and Mr. Ryan Dinsbrun.
Okay, Kate, are you looking to give testimony here for this proposal?
Uh, yes, this is Kate Ellingson. I am at 35 Rodman Street, next door to this property. And we're very concerned about the scope and size of this development. We did have a meeting with the developer, and he didn't address any of our concerns in that we feel the sides are too close to our property. And we have a mature tree on our property, which is right on the property line, and that tree will be most likely destroyed by the development because it is so large, and the root systems and the canopy go over both of the properties. And we're very concerned about this, as well as just the sheer size. Being three stories, it's going to shadow our entire property. And we did have meetings with the zone, and it was a split decision on the vote because one of the board members could not vote because he was a relative. But at the time, the meeting, it was sent to go to the city, but it was, it was not a clear decision as to support this project or not. And the other abutter, I know on the other side, also does not support this project.
Thank you. Peggy, are you looking to give testimony here? Hi, Peggy.
Hi, this is Peggy Prudential, 29 Eastland Road. The... There is no benefit to the neighborhood for this project. As it's being proposed, the benefit is to the homeowner to make more money for his retirement. The immensity of it, and the fact that the back of this building is the front of buildings on Eldridge Street. So this is creating a backyard garage door frontage to frontage of other houses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if, if, if I could just respond to some of the comments.
Just want to make sure there's no more comments, and then you can respond. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay. Mr. Spitz? Mr. Spitz?
So Madam Chair, the first couple of things I want to address goes to Ms. Kate Ellingson. The proponent has had numerous meetings addressing all concerns. However, they try to find common ground on certain areas. The setbacks that are concerned, those are pre-existing setbacks, as you can see from the drawings here. The addition, we've actually have more of those side yard setbacks in there. One thing that the proponent is also committed to is that if this project is approved, they will have an aburist come in and review the tree to ensure that their tree on their property is not impacted at all whatsoever during the construction phase. And they've also committed that if there was any sort of damage done on their property during the construction, that it would be repaired immediately because they had concerns surrounding a retaining wall. So again, my client has committed to working together with the neighborhood on those comments there. And again, you know, they have tried to work through a lot of these attractors. And the last comment, I'd just like to revisit again. Again, the heights of that are being proposed here in the stories are very consistent with building alignments in this neighborhood. And again, if I could just recall back that there is an elevation drop going from Rodman down to Ellingson, and that's the only reason why we were cited for that three stories versus the two and a half.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review. Yeah.
May I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
I think you're muted, Madam Chair, but was that to me?
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, Ms. Weewell?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next, we have case BOA one-four-eight-zero-nine-five-five, with the address of Nineth Taylor Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, my name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project, and with me is also the owner, John Delano. The project is a small addition to the rear of an existing single-family house on Taylor Street. You can see in the drawing there the rear extension shown on the left-hand side. It's currently one story. It used to be two stories, and we're looking for permission to put the second story back because the family needs some additional space. They've worked closely with all the neighbors on this, and we're not aware of anyone in opposition to it. The addition will be designed to blend with the existing house, and you can see that on the elevations on this next sheet here. So it's a very important space for the owners, but... And you can see in this drawing, the neighbors have a two-story addition on the similar L that's right next to us there. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted an abutters meeting on June twenty-seventh. I understand many abutters were on that vocalized their support. Our office further received three letters of support from directed abutters as well, which I believe we made available to this board. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Ms. Wu?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in support of Nineth Taylor Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no wraith hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-eight-four-six-seven-seven. The address of one-oh-nine Roethlisberger Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Madam Chair, I don't believe they're here, but we can defer this to September twelfth.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until September twelfth.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
You, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-zero-zero-one-three-two, with the address of two-nineteen Saratoga Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass-Lacasslaw, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the proponent. Also, we today at the hearing is our architect, Jason Arnt from Zephyr and Sharp Venture Group, the proponent, which consists of David Lenk and Evan Lenk, the owners of this property. Before you're on the screen is an image of a proposed new four-story, four-unit building to be constructed on a currently vacant parcel at two-nineteen Saratoga Street in the Eagle Hill section of East Boston. The lot is a narrow twenty-foot lot. So the building has been designed consistent with the narrowness of the lot and also with the design principles, which Jason Arnt will tell you about about infill construction in a generally historic neighborhood being somewhat contemporary in nature. So if we could just scroll back to the image of the building, please. So a lot of thought was put into the design of the new building since it's infill construction, working closely with the Eagle Hill Civic Association and the abutters. This design that you see is the product of much, much input from the various groups and abutters that have an interest in new construction in the neighborhood. Again, it's four units, and this vacant parcel is in common ownership with the lot next door at two-seventeen Saratoga Street, which is a historic brick building that my clients have restored and repaired. And that is currently a three-family structure. The proposal consists of two two-bedroom units and two three-bedroom units, but there is no parking at this proposed infill construction. Again, that was the product of the working with the neighborhood and the desire for a large rear lot. Rear yard area, which consists of a good amount of open space behind the building, in exchange for which there's no parking. At this point, I will turn it over to Jason Arnt, the architect, to walk you through the floor plans and the design and programming considerations that were brought to bear. Jason?
Good morning, Jason Arnt, Zephyr, Texas, three-fifteen Eighth Street, Boston. So as Mark was speaking of, this is an infill building. The design aesthetic was actually well-received with the neighborhood broadly. The idea of taking some, a modern approach to the local vernacular and moving some materials around, something that might be typically on the roof, move down to the lower area with a long-lasting zinc and elegant proportions, if I do say so myself. The building itself is situated five feet back from the lot line. We're going to allow ourselves a five-foot green buffer at the front. As Mark mentioned, the curb cut will be removed. The owner has committed to actually replacing that curb cut with a street tree. Programmatically, the building's pretty straightforward if you start scrolling through the plans. The ground floor plan is the entrance and a two-bedroom residential unit of about nine-hundred-and-forty square feet. The second floor would be another two-bedroom unit of about thousand square feet. And then the third floor, we have two duplexes. These are three-bedroom units of about eleven-hundred-and-fifty square feet going up to the setback fourth floor. The setback on the fourth floor is about six feet, eleven feet from the lot line. All the units will have private outdoor space via a walkout decks. And the instance of the upper duplexes will have two private roof decks with accessible via a headhouse. In addition to the private outdoor space, we are proposing that everybody has access to a public outdoor space via the backyard. This would be accessed through the basement. The basement would be primarily used as storage for the residents above. I think that's about it.
And Madam Chair, just, this is in the East Boston iPod due to the pendency of the current plan for East Boston, and we are mindful of the BPDA's recommendation. But I also just wanted to point out that we did strive mightily to achieve as many of the planning criteria set forth in the current pending plan, including the proposed maximum lot coverage under the plan is sixty percent, and this proposal is fifty-eight percent lot coverage. Minimum permeable surface of thirty percent. This proposal has forty-two percent. Minimum front yard, two-point-five. This has five feet. Maximum building depth is seventy feet, and this is sixty-three feet. Maximum building width of fifty, and we have twenty. Another important criteria is minimum rear yard of thirty-three percent of the lot area, and we have thirty-two percent. So again, with the give and take and the balance between all the considerations of the Civic Association, the neighbors, the design considerations, creating new dwelling units on a vacant parcel, we think that we've achieved as much compliance as possible with the plan and otherwise have satisfied all of the interested parties in the process. And with that, I'll pause to take any questions.
Can you speak to this in the context of the surroundings? I'm looking to see if there are other four-story structures nearby and headhouse versus hatch versus roof decks in general. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, right next door at two-twenty-one. So if you're looking at this site plan right here, on the right-hand side of the building is a new condominium building that is four stories, seven units, and has headhouses on it as well. So that's the most immediate context. The building to the left is the historic brick building, but we've aligned the front of the building, if you go back to the original image, and the fourth floor is setback in the front to...
Yeah.
It's a little hard to tell there, but Jason, if you could explain that better?
Yeah, so we were aligning the front of the building lines with the new construction to the right at two-twenty-one Saratoga. The height of the building to the right, as Mark was saying, is a four-story with a headhouse. The building to the left, which is the existing brick building that's been saved or renovated, is actually a three-and-a-half-story building with like a basement that's coming out of the ground quite a bit and a good bit of height on it. So we're just slightly taller than that one and probably a little bit shorter than the one to the right.
And then on the fourth level here in the front, that's setback to create a little walkout terrace and make that portion of the top floor less visible from the street.
Any other questions from the board?
Can you talk about the zoning violations and what aspect of this project is not consistent with Plan East Boston?
Yes, so those two goies in hand, Ms. Panado. The criteria of the plan that we do not meet is that the... This is a three-F sub-district, so the fourth unit constitutes multifamily residential use. Maximum height of three stories. We have the partial fourth floor setback in the front, and the minimum side yard setback is two-point-five. And the distance between two-nineteen and the building in common ownership on the right is just under two feet. And the distance between the new building and the new condo building on the left is five feet between the buildings, but it's a zero lot line condition given the exceptionally narrow width of twenty feet in the lot line. Our other zoning issues is, again, it's the East Boston iPod, so we need a conditional use iPod permit for that. It's in the groundwater conservation overlay district, so we need a conditional use permit for our groundwater system, which we have submitted the Article thirty-two letter and the no harm letter. And then, of course, the off-street parking insufficient as we opted to go with the no parking in exchange for all the other considerations of the larger rear lot, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the, both the zoning issues and the non-compliance with provisions of Plan East Boston.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melvia Gomez here with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for this project on November first, two thousand twenty-two. Two abutters were present on the call. The abutters expressed concerns about the parking of the project and expressed overall approval of the design. The applicant met with Eagle Hill Neighborhood Association in November two thousand twenty-two and January two thousand twenty-three, and the group voted to support sixteen residents in favor and one in opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. We have both letters from the applicant for G-cut.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Elaine Jonathan with Counselor Carter's office. At this time, Counselor Carter would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor-at-Large Michael Flaherty, on record in support.
Lee?
Hi, my name's Lee Valentine. My wife, Elena O'Malley, and I live at one-sixth of Bennington Street, and we are diagonal abutters to the property. We have two areas of concern that we would hope the board will consider prior to approval of process. One, I'll mention because it was mentioned during the presentation, is the presence of headhouses. The elevation of land on Saratoga is much higher than the Bennington Street properties. And the board has been approving projects that are already very tall and then on top of these elevated buildings. And although there may be some aesthetics from the street which look different, we're on the rear side, so the mass of the building, including its headhouses, impacts us. And in East Boston, a lot of times, particularly our neighborhood, we've been favoring more hatch access instead of headhouses. I spoke with David Lenk, one of the developers. I had a good conversation with him. It sounded like they were proposing headhouses principally because they thought it had a duty of compliance to include the headhouse. And we believe that it would help with amassing the building from our perspective on our side of the lot if that was converted to a hatch. And that has been a trend for at least a number of the buildings in the area, particularly buildings of this size. I believe Mr. Lenk said that they would probably not oppose it if the board sought to convert from headhouse to hatch, although you can have his attorney address that. The second area of concern we have has to do with the positioning of our particular property. We are basically at the low spot of all surrounding buildings in the area. And so we would be more susceptible to runoff water than pretty much anyone else in the area. And in the past, the board has approved other projects, and we've had large buildings, you know, go up, for instance, on two-twenty-three Saratoga. And we forewarned the city and Eagle Hill Civic Association this is going to cause us flooding. Because we get atypical flooding, we get runoff at high speed from any of the properties nearby if there's not a, you know, water, something to catch the water running off the property or if the drainage is improper. And we found that, as we predicted, two-twenty-three Saratoga has caused substantial flooding, we believe, to our property since it was constructed. We have similar concerns to two-nineteen, although we want to say that they do have a backyard, but we believe that the back end of the structure is being moved closer than the existing garage that's on the property. And so we worry about the permeability of the land. And again, it's not normal drainage that is really an issue. It's runoff. The water can come onto our property just by rolling off the land at high speed. So any change in permeability is potentially problematic to us. We have received just recently from David Lenk. We had good communication with him recently, and he sent us the Article thirty-two letters and the no harm letters. But again, I don't know that those particularly addressed our concerns about the fast runoff for it. And we'd like to offer to the board... And we'd like to offer to the board's consideration the possibility of having a small, solid retaining wall at the rear of the property combined with means to capture any of the water that gathers there and route it back into the proposed drain system. We think that would be potentially helpful. We didn't come forward with this particular proposal to Mr. Link until today because he just got some of his approval letters concerning drainage recently himself, and we just were given the letter as of yesterday. So we've had good communication, and we'd like to thank Mr. Link for that.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Thank you. Mr. Lacass, do you want to address those issues before we proceed?
Two quick things, Madam Chair. As as you heard from Christian Simonelli, we have an approved groundwater recharge system, which will capture all of the rainwater from the roof surface of the building and divert it into a Caltech chamber in the rear yard. We also have the 32% of the rear yard area is pervious open space, specifically designed to assist with the groundwater recharge and in addition to capturing all the runoff on the roof. And that is 32% of the lot area is open space. In terms of the hatch versus headhouse, my client is agreeable to, as part of the BPDA design review, convert the headhouse as shown to hatch access for the two roof decks for the top floor units.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve with BPDA design review.
And just maybe add to the BPDA design review with a focus on converting the to a hatch roof access.
Sounds good. Add it.
May I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia has joined us, so Mr. Valencia?
Yes, thank you. Good morning everyone. I'm calling for somebody else, that's the reason I just joined.
Thank you, no worries, appreciate it. Ms. Panado?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. So before we take a recess, because we have to until 11:00 AM, just want to remind folks, so we are now a seven-member board. However, both, two of us need to leave by 2:00 PM, so consequently, it will become a five-member board at that time. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Mr. Zuzula, we will hear you first and then take a recess. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for Saratoga Street. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to Dorchester Avenue, Mr. Stenbridge.
With that, we will revisit case BOA 1462119 with the address of 1742 to 1748 Dorchester Avenue. And if I word correctly, we do have the applicant and the representative present.
Yep, good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board, and thank you for Mr. Board Member Valencia for joining. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Quirtian Miller, here on behalf of Demetrius and Bobby Jerisamides, who are the property owners and developers. They have owned this site for around 30 years. They are the longtime property owners of 1742 to 1748 Dorchester Avenue. And also with me is our architect, Derek Rubenoff, and Anat Bek Noctigal from Derek Rubenoff Architects. Next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. This is just a display of what I just said, so we can move on to the next slide, knowing that time is short. This is a slide of some property context. The property now is an old service station and gas station that the Jerisamides family are looking to redevelop into a mixed-use residential and ground-floor commercial building. You can see on the left, the site is conveniently located along DOT AV, kind of smack in the middle of walking distance between Shamet MVTA station and Ashmont MVTA station. On the right-hand side, you could see the site is a uniquely shaped and located lot on the corner of both Simont and Dorchester Ave., and it's approximately 5,967 square feet, fronting on two streets. Next slide, please. This is just an existing exterior view of the current condition of the site from the corner of Simont Road and Dorchester Avenue. Again, you can see here, it's an old defunct, out-of-service gas station and service station. It's not the site's highest and best use, and that is the reason for the proposal in front of you today. Next slide, please. Some additional existing exterior views of the site, again, from from various viewpoints in and around the site, including Simont and Dorchester Ave., again, just to give an idea of of the site and the context around it. Next slide. And this is just to show some context of the area. Site is located in a multifamily residential local services subdistrict, so the MFR residential use isn't allowed use. We we are proposing the ground-floor restaurant, which is conditional, which you'll see in a minute. And we just wanted to highlight, you know, we are on DOT AV. There are several buildings in the immediate area of similar size, height, and density, including two more recently approved four-story buildings. On the left-hand side, you can see here, 1700 Dorchester Avenue and 1710 Dorchester Avenue, which are a few blocks north of our site. You can see our site in the red dot and one and two above, and we also highlight a few other, you know, more dense buildings along DOT AV. Next slide. This is our zoning slide, Madam Chair. Happy to go through this at the end of the presentation if there are any questions. We have designed the project to scale and complement this unique corner location on DOT AV. It's a corner lot on a busy thoroughfare, consistent with some of the newer heights on DOT AV, so it does need zoning relief for a variety of areas. Many of them are related to the corner location and replacing this non-conforming, kind of loud, environmentally unfriendly use with what we think is a better better use for today's day and age. Next slide. This is just the zoning refusal letter. Again, just, you know, to show what we need, a lot of this has to do with the corner lot and our location. However, happy to go in more detail, Madam Chair, if there's any questions in Q and A and discuss the violations. Next slide. Thank you. And I'll pass this over to Derek Rubenoff, who's our architect. I just want to give you just very quickly the high-level summary. We are demolishing that existing single-story gas station. What's being proposed is a four-story mixed-use building. The four-story is pulled back a decent amount at the top level, which you will see. You can see here on the left side, a larger space in brown, which is a 1,282-square-foot restaurant space on the first floor and street level. We are proposing 14 dwelling units on the upper floors, along with semi-covered kind of garage parking in the rear with access off of Simont Road. This would also provide, out of the 14 units, two of these units would be affordable IDP units under the city's current IDP policies. With that, I'll toss it to Derek, quickly show you what I just discussed and described, and then we're happy to take any questions. So Derek, over to you.
Great, thank you, Nick. Good morning to Madam Chair and to the board. Appreciate your time today. Derek Rubenoff, Derek Rubenoff Architect, 82 Spring Street in West Roxbury, and with me is Anat Bek Noctigal from my office. As you see, Nick has been explaining our site plan here. We've been working with the BPDA on this. And per BPDA request, we have provided six parking spaces, three of those are standard and three of those are compact, and we have 14 covered bicycle spaces. Currently on the street, there is one space in front on Dorchester Avenue on the left there of the diagram, and the rest is a giant curb cut for the gas station, so that curb cut on the on Dorchester Avenue would be eliminated. Instead of having one space on the street, we would now have four. So in addition to the six spaces provided on-site, including one handicap, there would be four instead of one on Dorchester Avenue. You can see the bicycle room at the bottom left, and the entrance to the residential apartments is on Dorchester Avenue at the bottom left. The dashed red line at the bottom right is the overhang of the building above, so as Nick mentioned, the parking is mostly underneath the building, but not entirely. We have a five-foot setback at the bottom of the screen against the Jerisamides family neighboring building. And I believe that's a 10-foot setback on the, yeah, 10-foot setback on the right against the next building on Simont Road. Other than that, we are maintaining the street wall along Dorchester Avenue, building right out to the lot line. And if we go to the next slide, this is the, again, the same plan that you just looked at, just a different diagram of it. So as Nick mentioned, we have a restaurant space at the top left, restaurant retail space at the top left. The core elements in lobby for the for the apartments at the bottom left, and you can see the in and out that we've worked out with the BPDA on Simont Road there. If we go to the next slide. Great, second floor plan. We have, yeah, great, thank you. We have four one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit. All the units in this building, because there's an elevator, will be group one units, by the way, for accessibility. Let's keep going here to the next slide. All the units meet the minimum requirements or be better than that for the BPDA sizes for units, minimum sizes. Here we are on, I believe, the third floor here, and we have two one-bedrooms and three two-bedrooms.
Could I ask you to just pause there to see if folks have questions? I don't know if we need details on every single floor, so I just want to make sure board members have who have questions about zoning, et cetera, get to it.
Yeah, we have three more slides, Madam Chair. And Derek, you want to go quickly through?
Yeah, sure. Let's go to the next one.
Sorry, Madam Chair, we'll be quick.
Yep. Importantly, on the top floor, on the fourth floor, we have recessed the the fourth floor, similar to what's down the road recently constructed at 1700 Dorchester Avenue. We've recessed the the fourth floor back from the the two streets, the two streets there, and provided a three-bedroom penthouse unit along with two one-bedroom units on that floor. There's a private roof deck for the three-bedroom unit and also a common roof deck for everybody in the building at the bottom left. Let's go to the next slide quickly, please. Let's go to the next slide, please. Great. These are the outdoor proposed views. These are the proposed views of the building here. This is across the street on Dorchester Avenue. And what we are doing here is we, as Nick mentioned, it's the corner is very important, so we are accenting the corners with brick, using materials from other buildings nearby to keep context. So a combination of brick at the corners. If we go to the next slide, you can see. And also, looking at lap siding as a reference to the neighboring buildings in Dorchester as well. The first floor will be very glassy, and that's, again, to create a good shopping experience for those walking up and down Dorchester Avenue. And again, as I mentioned, the fourth floor is recessed back and maintaining the street wall, the line of the third, the top of the third story. You can see that that's that's consistent with the two buildings that are on the right, as well as five buildings across the street.
Yeah, next slide is the last slide, Madam Chair. I'll jump in just very quickly. It's a multifamily residential use, as I said. It's an allowed use under the zoning code. This is development without displacement. There is no residential units on this site, so we're replacing this kind of non-conforming, loud, environmentally unfriendly use with the residential use. There are 14 units. Two of those units would be affordable units, so it's about 14.3%. And we are thinking condos here. We would have to enter into an affordable housing agreement with the city, with the BPDA, if approved by the board. So we're not 100% sure yet on the condos, but obviously, we have to enter into an agreement that dictated that with the BPDA if approved. So that is the way we are leaning at this point in time. And apologies for the lengthy presentation, but there was a lot to cover and happy to answer any questions that that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to confirm, as you advertise nine parking spaces, you're down to six, correct?
Yes, that is correct. As part of the as part of the process, you know, we, this isn't this isn't an Article 80 project, Madam Chair, we're below the thresholds. But we, you know, it is it is a project that has size to it. We wanted to make sure that we got ahead of things and and had some initial kind of review with the BPDA. And as part of that process, the nine parking spaces that we tried to fit in as best as possible did did get reduced to six. So that was part of the kind of pre-file review process before we got to today's hearing.
And and you have one curb cut on Simont, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We're closing all the other curb cuts on DOT AV to make it better pedestrian activity, better pedestrian-friendly, add parking back to the street and take it off of Simont. That's correct.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just the affordability restriction on the two IDP units.
Yeah, yes, member Pinato, yeah. So this would be caught, again, well, you know, we're we're more likely than not, this is condos, so they would be the typical, one would be at 80% AMI, one would be at 100% AMI. We do have eight one-beds and four two-beds. It likely would be, we're thinking, again, we haven't entered into the, we're thinking it would likely be one one-bed and one two-bed at that 80% and 100% AMI, which is the kind of standard AMI for condos under the current IDP.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add to the question from Ms. Panado, how many years will be the restriction for the two IDP units?
Yes, Board Member Valencia, thank you. So the typical time period is 50 years. So we would enter into an affordable housing agreement with the BPDA if approved by this board. We would then go through that process. That would be a 50-year deed restriction on these two units.
Okay, and about the parking, you have six parking spaces. How far is the closest T station or both station?
Yes, Mr. Valencia, I think we had that on one of the earlier slides, but it's about, it's under a half mile to both. So it's on both the Shamet and and Ashmont MVTA stations right here. Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Oh, you just, there you go, this one, Mr. Valencia, you could see here, Shamet is north by about five miles and Ashmont, obviously, they're on the same line, so, you know, I think you'd probably go to Shamet because it puts you closer to the city, but we are equidistant between two.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one question. So given the site's former use, what is sort of the timeline that looks like in seeing getting the site ready for development, and when do you expect to start construction if approved today?
Yes, member Weewell, thank you. The underground storage tanks have actually already been removed, that's my understanding. Bobby or Demetrius, if I'm wrong, say something, but I believe that is the case. The the prep work has been done, right? Bobby, I see you on the screen. You just want to nod or give me a thumbs up or say yes? There you are.
Yes, the the tanks have been removed, and they've done a lot of soil testing, and we're we're actually fairly close to being able to develop.
So thank you, Bobby. So Ms. Weewell, that the answer is we've we've cleaned up the site, all the environmental work's been done. Obviously, we would have to demo, but, you know, the hope would be in the spring, would be the plan that they're committed to moving forward on this project, so that would be the hope. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I open it to public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cochrane with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process. Our office held an abutters meeting on May 8th of this year, where one person supported the project and two people opposed the project. I've also received one phone call in opposition, as well as three emails in opposition to the project. Concerns over the project include height, density, road and control, and the process of removing the buried gas tanks below. The local civic association met with the proponents in late May, where their members expressed the same concerns, and their general membership meeting, the group voted to oppose this project. We'd like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. Thank you.
Any elected officials? If not, I'll go to Reggie. Can you state your name and address and tell us briefly if you in support or opposition?
Yes, my name is Reggie Stewart. I live on Weathland Ave. in Dorchester. I I'm a little concerned about the metric of affordability at 80 to 100% AMI. I understand that that's a government standard, but as far as Dorchester residents and more specifically black Dorchester residents, our incomes are closer to to 50% AMI, so I don't know if there's any room for making it more affordable for any and all Dorchester residents, maybe considering, maybe consider a couple of more affordable units, but, you know, outside of that, you know, I don't have any issues.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any other raised hands? I have no additional raised. Oh, some one just popped up. Sorry, Evelyn, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. I live on 12 Rosson Street, and my main concern is parking. We already, I already have seen, and 12 Rosson Street is basically kind of adjacent on that building on the other side of the the front side of the Neutrals. on the other side of the front side of the Metreals. I'm concerned about the parking space. That's a lot of units. And yes, they're like, oh, Sharmet's over here, Dorchester, Ashmont Station is over there. So the street that goes to Sharmet Street, a station, is actually my street. That will create a huge traffic right in front of my door, to be honest with you, people walking to Sharmet Street. So safety issue is a concern for me, you know. While your medical shoes is another concern for me. So why don't they have more parking to provide for the units?
Thank you.
So we can cut down the traffic on my street.
Thank you.
Okay, no additional raised hands. Sorry, another one just popped up. Do you want me to take it?
One more.
Okay, Michael.
That's it.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Michael Joy. I own the properties 10 and 14 Santuit Street, directly in back of the project supposed to proceed. My main concern is basically the road is slashed, the parking. Parking is super tight, because there's buildings popping up all over the place. I own those properties for decades on the 10 and 14 Santuit Street. The problem I'm having is basically during like the wintertime, when we have the snow and buring the seas, the main art therapy, it has to be cleared. So therefore, all these vehicles in question, it has to be taken off the main and go to the side streets. But the side streets is only pat as it is now. So that's, that's my concern, like during the street cleaning, you have to park on the opposite sides of the street. But again, people have to hit the side streets, you know, to get off the main. So that's my primary concern, is the parking and the safety of the residents in Dorchester.
Thank you. Do you want to respond to those, Mr. Zizoula?
Yeah, I can be very quick. We appreciate these comments and concerns. You know, Santuit is around the corner from us. You know, I think we're hoping that these are, if these are condos, that folks who are buying these units will understand that, that, you know, out of the six spaces, the two beds and the three bed will get a space. And if you have a studio or one bed, you would not. We're happy to have a discussion with the BPDA about affordability when we get to that point if approved. I do know that the BPDA recommended approval with BPDA Design Review on this project. So, you know, a lot of the parking issues are things that we have looked at with the city already, and we're looking to address further. You know, I think, you know, we're providing much-needed condo homeownership in these affordable units in a city with a housing crisis, development about displacement. So, you know, I think our hope is that the board sees that, you know, this location and use is a good fit for this DOT Ave thoroughfare. We understand that there are concerns. We've, you know, but I think we've tried to address them while also listening to the planning perspective of the city and kind of getting pushed and pulled in various directions on the parking standpoint. But, you know, I think the six spaces would provide the larger units to all have a parking space, and it would be deeded, so you wouldn't have issues with people trying to park, you know, and find spaces on the site. And that, you know, again, folks who are buying a condo here understand that if you have a one-bedroom in this development, you're likely not going to have a parking space. And in today's day and age, we would think that people who buy these units in this proximity to public transportation would, would understand that. And so that would be our response. And, you know, we asked the board to approve the project, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review and focus on sort of maximizing the affordability of the condos, the IDP units.
May I have a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Sorry, muted, yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. We'll see you all at 11:00.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Recording stopped.